All right, we'll call this meeting to order with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, can we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Eckert.
Well, here.
Mr. Franco.
Here.
Mrs. Goldblatt.
Here.
Mr. Greenlee.
Here.
Dr. O'Sherick.
Here.
Dr. Prabola.
Yes, here.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Far is absent, and Mrs. Arnold.
Here.
All right, let the record show that prior to tonight's meeting, we had an executive session to discuss personnel matters related to specific staff. Do we have any superintendent's remarks?
Absolutely, I have two months' worth of superintendent remarks. Good evening, Tigers, I want to start tonight's super talk with just giving a brief, brief update on my summer in late July, and I'm so excited to share this, my wife Tricia and I went to Austria and then to Ireland, and what an incredible experience. I had never been to Europe before. Our daughter Molly, who's, she's 22, but she lives and works in Salzburg, Austria, right now, and she works for a company called Salzburg Global, which is an international nonprofit, but she lives in the same building that they filmed The Sound of Music in, what the house was at The Sound of Music, that's where she lives and works. It's absolutely incredible, we got to visit with her and explore the city of Salzburg, which is the home of Mozart, and just incredible. From there, we transitioned to Ireland, we drove across the country, which was an experience, I wish Director Burke had warned me that the roads in Ireland were about this wide. It was an, it was an interesting experience, you drive on the left side, the steering wheel is on the other side of the vehicle, and the roads are ridiculously narrow, but it was everything you would envision. It is so green, you know, we were, we were just so very fortunate to just have a great, great trip. A few days after we returned home, and I want to share this, you know, with my community because, you know, this is important to me, and I, you know, I want to share, a few days after we returned home, my father passed away, and while it was incredibly sad, you know, he had been struggling, so it's really kind of a blessing, but he was a lifelong educator, and looking back, I could say, I guess, you know, he had a very profound impact on me, certainly on my career path, and I'd like to thank the school board and the many members of our school community that had reached out to express their sympathy and support, and I really just want to say, I really appreciate everyone's kind words. Let me tell everybody, I am so excited for the school year. It just makes me smile talking about it, I won't be able to sleep this weekend at all. Our staff will return to work on Monday, our students' first day will be next Wednesday, it's going to be such a great school year, and I'm so proud, and, you know, everyone knows, I love to brag about our school district, we do so many things exceptionally well, and we have so many course offerings and extracurricular opportunities. We have a very special school district and a wonderful and supportive community, and we truly have something for everyone here. You know, I want to encourage all of our parents and our caregivers, stay in touch with your child's teachers and school administrators throughout the year, you know, let's work together to give our students the best possible school experience. You know, I had shared with some of the board, but we have recently received our AP test results, they made, they made me very happy, to put it mildly. These advanced placement tests, they're not easy, in fact, in fact, they're downright difficult. In the 23-24 school year, which is two years ago, we had 15 test takers that took 22 tests. This past year, we had 94 test takers that took 126 AP tests, and I'm thrilled to say that we had a 60% pass rate on these extremely tough tests. You know, students that received a perfect score were celebrated with a yard sign that our high school admin team placed in their front yard. We didn't announce it, we just went through them in the front yard, I got to show you. They got one of these, they got one of these thrown in their front yard that they scored a five on the AP test. So Mr. Winsec was out in front yards putting yard signs in people's houses. I, I will tell you that for this upcoming year, we are adding three more AP courses, we're going to be offering AP Psychology, which has been extremely popular, AP Spanish, AP German, that brings our total AP course offerings up to 13, and I'll put that against any other school district in our area, public or private, I'll tell you that right now. As you may notice, when we get to the Personnel Report, we will have some administrative changes this year, you know, and it's, it's worth mentioning that Mr. Winsec will be leaving us. He got a promotion and will be a Central Office Administrator in a neighboring school district, and while we were certainly miss him, you know, I'm very confident in our ability to move forward, and I will certainly wish Mr. Winsec a great deal of luck and success moving forward, he is an excellent employee, he's an excellent administrator, and I know he'll be successful wherever his, you know, career path goes. So congratulations to Matt. In the September Board Meeting, I expect that we'll have a vote on the future of our proposed solar project, a decision will most likely hinge, and I fully realize that the Board's decision will probably most likely hinge on the federal government continuing to offer the significant direct payment for the installation of the panels. If offered, if that's still there, we'll get 45% of the cost of the project back, that would cover, you know, significant, significant amounts. In addition, we have been awarded a $1.2 million grant from the state, so a lot of a potential $10 million project, we're talking about $5.7 million would be, would be covered. If installed, and if we move forward with it, essentially not only, essentially we would have, I guess, be protected against in future energy increases, because we'd be producing our own, we'd be protected against energy inflation. It really has the potential to save us in the long run, you know, millions and millions of dollars. So I would tell anyone in the community, please tune into next week's, next month's meeting for more information and potential vote. Our first football game will be on Friday, August 22nd, at Lackawanna Trail, last year we opened with Trail at our place, this year we're at Trail on Friday, August 22nd, and I hope everyone in our community can travel to Trail to support our Tigers, and I'd love to flood their stadium with a sea of orange. Unfortunately, you know, we've been struggling with some low participation this fall with some of our girls' sports, sadly, we're not going to have a girls' soccer team this year because, I mean, quite frankly, we couldn't field the team. We will try that again next year, and, you know, internally, we're having some discussions on how to move forward with not only that sport, but a lot of our sports programs that might be struggling a little bit with numbers. You know, we continue to offer the same amount of sports as we did when our enrollment was twice as large. With six girls' sports programs in the fall vying for athletes, along with, you know, you have cheer, and you have our band, which is very large, it's very difficult, and, you know, programs and organizations are competing for the same students, and, you know, I'm not sure we could continue on the same path and expect different results, and I think that we're going to need some out-of-the-box kind of thinking on how to move forward. You know, it's definitely worth mentioning that there still isn't a PA State budget. The state legislature and the governor have the same legal requirement as, as we do, right? By law, by law, they have to pass a budget by June 30th, they didn't, and once again, this is kind of the norm, once again, that did not happen. You know, I'm very thankful for times like this, that we have a healthy fund balance, because we will not and have not received any state subsidies until the budget is passed, and this could go on for months, months and months. For us, I'm going to say this, for us, this is potentially good news, so anybody that watches our meetings or comes to our meetings, you've heard me say that I did not think our district and other rural Republican districts were treated fairly in the governor's proposed budget. What I'm hearing is that Republican state legislatures, legislators are pushing back on the governor's proposed education budget. Here's why this is the good news, because this potentially could only help us and hopefully provide us with some more state funding. You know, I'm real eager to see how this plays out over the next few months, but there is a possibility that we'll be dipping into our fund balance to make payroll until we start to receive state funding. You know, districts already, already, districts that don't have a strong fund balance are already taking short-term loans with interest, mind you, that they have to pay back to pay their bills and their payroll, that's not a position I want to see. You know, and finally, to conclude, I just want to state again that I'm super excited, and I hope you can tell, to see our staff on Monday, and I can't wait to welcome our students back to campus on Wednesday, it's going to be a great school year. Thank you very much.
Okay. At this time, we're going to open the floor to public comment from anybody in the audience who wants to make a public comment on agenda items only. Each person is granted up to four minutes to speak at this time, there'll be another comment session at the end where you get another four on any item, just please state your name and municipality when you come up.
Well, I might go start, Bill from Region Two. Let's see. There was some pallets of paper donation, what's that worth, and how much did it cost us to get them here from some other state? Did it pay to bring them here?
This is, this is just a comment, this isn't question and answer, but...
I'll address this afterward.
Well, the thing, there at the bottom of the, under letter F, it says, you don't have to, but it's a good practice to respond to questions from the public.
Mr. Widener, I will respond, but not within your four minutes, because I don't want to take that away from you.
Okay. The building signs, you know, we talk about wants and needs, how are they going to help our education, and I see their expiration date on those contracts already expired. And there's some back classes that have money in the accounts, there was a thing before that after so long, that got put, I don't know if it was in general fund or whatever, and then, there's a lot of big overage charges from top, top copy. I think that'll get a start for now.
Thanks. Do you have any other public comment?
I'll, I'll wait, I think someone's...
Come on up to the podium and just give your name and like your municipality, like what town.
Jackie Stockage, I'm from Monroe Township, so I don't know if this counts under the agenda item, but he had been speaking about it, the girls' soccer team, do we know why there's less enrollment on that, that's causing them to not be able to fill the teams, and then also, what specifically is the issue with the state budget, because it was increased this year for education, the proposed budget, that's, that's the only questions I have.
I don't want to cut your time, are you...
Yep, I'm good, just those two.
Okay, I'm going to start, I'm going to go right in order with Mr. Widener, and I'll gladly answer your questions to the best of my ability. The paper donation is valued at approximately $5,000, one of our pair professionals that recently left, Deanna Menning, her family owned a printing company that was going out of business, and we took our own box truck, and we went and picked up every paper they had, so the cost is whatever it costs for us to get the box truck up there, to get it, and we got quite a bit of paper, and it's not just copy paper, but it's, it's heavy paper, it's, I mean, it's very, it's very, very nice stuff, and we were very fortunate to get it. The building signs, you know, through conversations with actually some of our PTOs, and Mr. Shapolsky and our building administrators, you start looking around our buildings, and we realized that our, we don't have school names on any of our schools, our schools are not identified. Nowhere can you find on the primary center that says Tuncanic Area Primary Center, you cannot find on the intermediate center where it says Tuncanic Area Intermediate Center, try to find on the high school where it says Tuncanic Area High School, the signs don't exist. I would have thought, and, and Mr. Widener, you may know this better than me, than I, that probably should have been addressed through consolidation, but for whatever reason it wasn't, and maybe it was cost-driven, I don't know, but when Mr. Shapolsky tells me, you know, we have money that we could potentially look at doing this, we engaged with multiple sign companies and got some quotes, and we realized this is probably something we can do to, you know, clearly identify our buildings and have it done in a very professional-looking way, that's why the signs are on there. The money in the back classes, I can't offer you an explanation for that right now, and the overage charges is simply that there was more copies made than what was within our contract. Moving on to girls' soccer, as I could tell you why, I really don't know, I think last year we had about 13 players or 14 players, I know we had some seniors that graduated, I can't stipulate why, what I can tell you is that we have a smaller high school population, like for instance, I think we had 180 graduate last year, and I think our incoming class to the high school is about 130, so there are like literally less students that are here to choose from. I think in grades, Mr. Winsec and Mrs. Wood, correct me if I'm wrong, in grades nine through 12, a little over 600 students total?
Yeah.
So a little over 600 students total in grades nine through 12, that's who's eligible to play a varsity sport, so about half of those are female, so there are six varsity sports for them to choose from. Our band right now probably has over 100 players, or 100 musicians, I shouldn't say players, 100 musicians, so about probably 50 to 60 of those are female, our cheerleaders have about 30, so like the number is getting very short on who's available. Like I said, when our enrollment was doubled, I mean, I'm going back, you know, a significant amount of years, you know, at least a decade, when there was 4,000 students in this district, we offered the same amount of sports, and we, I don't know how feasible that's going to be moving forward. We are trying to find a solution, because the last thing I want to do is take an opportunity away from any of our students, never would I want to do that, so I, I really don't have a solution. We even talked to the PIAA about potentially having any of the girls that were on that team, if they could join the boys' team, you can't, because we sponsor both, so like that's a PIAA regulation, so we were making phone calls, we were doing, you know, we were trying to find any solution we could, potentially, you know, even potentially merging with another school district, you can't do that on the short term, like that's got to be done at the start of a, you know, a PIAA cycle, every two-year cycle, and that's a, of course, the PIAA makes that a lot more complicated than it should be, and I don't know if that's a viable solution, but it's just some of the brainstorming that, that kind of we've been doing, because it, it does, it breaks my heart a little bit to say we're not going to have one, I mean, because, you know, we have, we have, you know, we have a lot of student athletes that participate, when you look at our numbers between band and cheer in the six sports that we offer for, for girls in the fall, out of the 300 girls eligible, a large majority are doing at least one of those things. So, I mean, I wish I had a better answer than that, but to say specifically why soccer, I don't think I could give you that answer, other than it's almost becoming a numbers game. When we have 18 playing field hockey, and 17 in tennis, and 16 with volleyball, like the numbers are just, you know, it's just not there. The state budget, I wish, I could ask you that question, I don't have a solution anymore than, than, than what I said, right, so...
I'm curious if it's like an allocation issue or something?
It is an allocation issue, so they did, he did, the governor did propose more money to education, but 97% of it went to something called the adequacy formula, right, so there's basic ed funding, special ed funding, and now there's this adequacy formula, that I don't know if you remember, a couple of years ago, there was a lawsuit filed by urban school districts saying they were underfunded, so they won that lawsuit. So the governor's response to this was, we have to make up the money to the urban areas, but he took 97% of all state money and put it into this adequacy formula. So we are one of 150 school districts in the state that are splitting the other 3% of state money. Like, I'm all for fair and equitable, but let's make it fair and equitable, you know, we're getting an increase, or the proposed budget for us was a total increase of $90,000. For instance, our healthcare alone went up $750,000. Some districts right around us in this area, their allocation this year is $10 million. And even if they're four times our size or five times our size, the difference between $10 million and $90,000, that's a tough pill for me personally to swallow. So I think there's some pushback in the legislature from, you know, the Republican side, and right now, I'm very appreciative, appreciative of that. I wish we had a budget, believe me when I tell you. Having to budget and pass a budget in June without knowing how much money we're getting from the state, it's, it's like a shell game, it really is, but I appreciate your questions, both Mr. Widener and I appreciate your questions. Thank you.
I think it's also interesting to note that there's been a lot of talk lately about, and if you talk, I mean, I'm sure all of the people who are complaining on social media are also making sure to call their local congressmen and women, but one of the bigger things that can be done to change this, if you go with this funding formula, not that anybody cares about this part, but a lot of that comes from the fact that these schools that are in poorer communities have smaller, or like less money coming in from property value, so they're saying that they were underfunded for all these years because they didn't have the same wealth in the community that other schools did, therefore, those kids didn't get all the same resources, and the state should have been making that up. There's been some talk lately that something as simple as one additional percent sales tax could completely eliminate property taxes for schools from everywhere, like, and all the funding could come directly from the state. You know, I think it probably is going to be time very soon, if it hasn't already passed, that we need to be looking at different ways of how we fund education, not that we aren't all responsible for funding education, which I absolutely believe with every fiber of my soul, is that it's the community's responsibility to educate their children in their community, but maybe it doesn't, not maybe, it shouldn't be on the backs of the people who have already paid for their house 15 times over, so that's just a talking point to take on with your local Pennsylvania state representatives and senators.
Holly.
Can I say just one thing, Jackie, just so you know too, in case, I know Paul said a lot about the soccer, there were only eight girls, and so, I don't know if your daughter was one of them, and I would have been, I was a soccer player in high school, so I would have been so upset if that happened, but they tried, Facebook, they tried everything to get more girls to play, and we just didn't have enough to field the teams, so it had nothing to do with finances or anything like that, it was purely numbers. Nope. There was just not enough girls that wanted to play, which breaks my heart.
Okay, well, let's, any other public comment on agenda items? Moving along, item G, the approval of minutes, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion in the second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Eckert.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mrs. Goldblatt.
Yes.
Mr. Greenlee.
Yes.
Dr. O'Sherick.
Yes.
Dr. Prabola.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold.
Yes. Section two, letter A, Business and Finance, do we have a motion to approve the Business and Finance report?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in the second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mrs. Goldblatt.
Yes.
Mr. Greenlee.
Yes.
Dr. O'Sherick.
Yes.
Dr. Prabola.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Eckert.
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold.
Yes. Under the Superintendent's Report, we have all kinds of fun things, what do you have, Lawrence, there Superintendent?
Well, the, this evening, the Personnel Report is so large, due in, mostly because we have 120 volunteers that we're processing for the upcoming school year, so we did split the Personnel Report into three distinct votes, which you can see when you look at the document, so the first thing I'll ask for is a motion to approve Part One of the Personnel Report, which includes professional resignations and appointments of professional staff, support staff, department chairs, Fusion C3 instructors, student interns, and requests for leave.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in the second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Goldblatt.
Yes.
Mr. Greenlee.
Yes.
Dr. O'Sherick.
Yes.
Dr. Prabola.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Eckert.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold.
Yes.
And again, I'd like to wish Matt, that was officially Matt's resignation, I'd like to wish Matt Winsec, you know, good luck in his new adventure. I would also want to point out, there was a retirement that we approved, now it won't happen until March, but Mr. Schwart, out of our Career Tech Department, has informed us that he will be leaving us, I think, on March 6th, and we just approved his retirement, so he'll be with us most of the year, but I want to say that he is a valued employee, and when he does leave in March, he will be greatly missed. We are already looking for a potential replacement, because again, that's not an easy position to fill, and I think he knew that, and he wanted to give us as much time as possible to help us locate an instructor with that certificate, but certainly, congratulations to Mr. Schwart.
And if Winsec and Supon weren't so big, I'd throw down because they're leaving.
Yeah, right, you can't physically stop them, that's for sure. Matt, thank you for your contributions, I'll miss you, I appreciate the work you did with my son Ian on the pairs for players stuff, and so, best of luck in the future.
And of course, everybody in the community knows what my son had to say about your contributions for his Eagle Scout project and things like that, so you might not have been here a long time, but he's going to say that his name is on a plaque on the wall, and that it's because you were here to help facilitate that happening.
Thanks, Matt.
I would just also like to point out that with the vote that just happened, we just, you know, overwhelmingly approved Mrs. Wood to be the new high school principal, and I can't think of a better person to, to take over the reins, and I'm very, very proud of her, and I know she's going to do a fantastic job, and, and really... and, and, and really, you know, her heart and soul is in Tuncanic, and I could tell you that, and she's going to give us everything she has.
Cool, it's always been here, never left, and now it's just here for perpetuity.
Perpetuity. Congratulations, Brittany.
Also, I would like to say, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm looking, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm also going to congratulate Mrs. Sherman, or Ms. Deb Sherman. She is our new special education director. The board had given me the authority to get her in place when Dr. Craig left. So she's been in place for a couple of months, I'm just taking it for granted, but you were just officially awarded that position. Congratulations, Deb. And she's been doing an absolutely outstanding job this summer. I, I've been thrilled with her, but, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The second part of the personnel report, motion to approve part two of the personnel report, including awarding of tenure and extracurricular and extra pay appointments.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Greenlee?
Yes.
Dr. O'Sherick?
Yes.
Dr. Prabola?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Eckert?
Yes.
Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Mrs. Goebel?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes.
And the third part, motion to approve part three of the personnel report, including a hundred and twenty volunteers.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Dr. O'Sherick?
Abstain.
Dr. Prabola?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Abstain.
Mrs. Eckert?
Yes.
Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Mrs. Goebel?
Yes.
Mr. Greenlee?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes.
Next is conference attendance. Motion to approve conference attendance as presented.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Dr. Prabola?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Eckert?
Yes.
Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Mrs. Goebel?
Yes.
Mr. Greenlee?
Yes.
Dr. O'Sherick?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes.
And most of those were for the upcoming PSBA PASTA conference. We again are going to have a presentation at that conference. We have three staff members that will be presenting. One of them is Mrs. Egan, so she will be there presenting. So I'm very proud to, you know, have an important role at that conference.
Yes, and I appreciate that there are board members, our board members have been more engaged with these type of things than they had been in previous years. There are two other board members that'll be there besides the ones that were on the conference approval list, myself and Phil Farr. Phil won a conference attendance at last year's conference, so that was covered, and because of my involvement with the governing board for the PSBA, I, they cover my attendance and room for the, the conference. So it's great because it's important that school board members continue to learn about the ways to do their job. Nobody's phoning it in, everybody's gonna, not gonna, but does take this position very seriously.
And the last one under my report is a motion to approve school bus van drivers for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year as presented.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Eckert?
Yes.
Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Mrs. Goebel?
Yes.
Mr. Greenlee?
Yes.
Dr. O'Sherick?
Yes.
Dr. Prabola?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes. Committee reports. I don't believe we've had any committee meetings since we've last met in June. Do we need to schedule any? Do you want to have a buildings and grounds meeting scheduled before the next board meeting to discuss any of the solar stuff, or is that something that we would just cover in the main meeting?
I, I, I really don't know if that's necessary. I'll defer to any board suggestions on that. I, I really think this is going to boil down to, to one thing.
It's just finances that we're waiting for, right?
Correct. I, I, it's kind of boiled down to, is the credit there or is it not? I mean, if, if the board wants a committee meeting, certainly, I'd be happy to set that up.
Oh, I have no need to schedule extra meetings. I just wanted to make sure that if we thought we needed one, we could talk about it here, because then it would be on the.
I don't, I don't personally need a meeting, but what I want to say is, is as long as people understand the solar finances before they walk into a vote. And so, this is, this is literally the biggest savings project that I, in my twelve years on this board. And so, if we get that solar credit, I want to make sure that people aren't coming in here without understanding of what the numbers look like. So if everybody feels like they know what the numbers look like, great, but if not, we need to see those numbers beforehand or have a discussion about it. So this, this is a five million dollar project, and we spend a million dollars a year on electricity. And so, the, I mean, I guess I just covered the finances with you, but, you know, like, I hear, I mean, I, I'm on Facebook Marketplace, but I'm not on Facebook, and so I hear there's a lot of complaining about solar, and I think that the same people that are complaining about taxes going up. And so I want to be crystal clear about this, that the numbers are so overwhelmingly in favor of doing this, that if we get that five million dollar credit, we would be foolish not to pass that. And so if people want to review the numbers beforehand, let's make sure that everyone's comfortable. All right, that's, I said my piece.
I got it. And agree. All right. Well, we don't need any committee meetings then, so we'll move along to unfinished business, the gas cap for busing contractors.
This is for a discussion and a possible motion to repeal the gas cap. We had talked about this in June, and I said I would bring it back. If you remember some years ago, when gas prices got very, very high, we were looking to potentially help our contractors, and we put a gas cap in place, so anything over that, we would have picked up the cost of that. Our gas caps that are currently in place are four dollars a gallon for gas and five dollars a gallon for diesel. So anything above that, we would pay. However, like, when you see gas right now, it's like three thirty a gallon, or three oh nine a gallon, that's not what we pay, because there's tax in that. So currently, for us right now, gas is two dollars and nineteen cents a gallon, because we don't pay the tax, and diesel is two seventy-seven a gallon. So we're nowhere near our gas cap. Now, we haven't had to even consider paying, you know, you know, above that for years now. And, you know, when we talked about the new contract for our contractors, do we want to repeal this gas cap right now, and then, you know, address it, should it come up again, or we could leave it in place? I mean, either way, it doesn't, it doesn't really matter. But it was something that we had discussed previously, and I said I would bring it back for a potential discussion and a vote. So, I mean, if the board wants to take no action on this and leave it in place, you know, I'm, I'm, basically, we're perfectly good either way. It was just to bring it up to the board. Because it is something that's on our books that we're not even, even remotely thinking about anymore.
So why, I mean, there's no benefit of keeping it on the books right now until something changes, correct?
Correct. That's, that's the way I was looking at it.
Yeah, I, I think we've visited this so many times, I, my preference would be to just take it off.
I agree.
Get rid of it.
Because, because.
Because then we're going to keep talking about it.
Right, and the circumstances could change, and so let's do business as usual.
Right.
And then if we get a crazy gas spike, we come back.
So do we have to make a motion to remove the gas cap?
That's it.
I'll make a motion to remove the gas cap issue.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion?
And we can always relook at it if there's a change.
That's right. Hopefully, we don't get gas that high for a while.
All right, hearing none. Let's, can we have a, whatever, that roll call, that's what we want.
Mrs. Eckert?
Yes.
Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Mrs. Goebel?
Yes.
Mr. Greenlee?
Yes.
Dr. O'Sherick?
Yes.
Dr. Prabola?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes. Okay, and our new business, informational documents, so the Visa account and the right-to-know listing. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Letter B, the first reading of board policies.
Those two policies, six twenty-six and six twenty-six point one, are just to be compliant with federal regulations.
But no vote necessary is the first reading?
Right.
Right.
Letter C, motion to approve the agreements with Blue Cloud Staffing and Authorized Partner of USA Staff Services as presented.
Just for, so the board is aware, this is for nursing services, for one specific student that has a very high level of need. The student is, our student, lives in Tuncanic, but does not attend one of our schools, the, the need is, is, is vast, but that's what this is. And, I mean, quite frankly, we're required to provide this.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Mrs. Goebel?
Yes.
Mr. Greenlee?
Yes.
Dr. O'Sherick?
Yes.
Dr. Prabola?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Eckert?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes. Letter D, the agreement, a motion to approve an agreement with Children's Service Center's partial hospitalization program as presented.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? These next several, you know, D, E, F, and G, even maybe.
This is if we send students there.
Yes.
How much we would pay.
And this is a standard agreement that we come to every year, and these are programs that we would be required to provide for any student that needs them.
It's funny, and I'll just mention this quick, I was watching Dr. Supan at his, now that he's a superintendent, at his Valley, Wimley Valley West meeting last night, and every one of these was also on their agenda for approval in the same order. I just smiled, I was like, well, we're doing it tomorrow. Yeah, but this is if we send a student there, what we would pay.
Right. All right. Do we have a motion? Did we already get a motion?
We have a motion in a second.
Can we get a roll call, please?
Mrs. Goebel?
Yes.
Mr. Greenlee?
Yes.
Dr. O'Sherick?
Yes.
Dr. Prabola?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Eckert?
Yes.
Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes. Unless there's an objection, I'd like to group letters E, F, and G, which would be motions to approve agreements with the New Story Schools, with youth advocate programs, and with Graham Academy, which are all similar to the one we just voted on, into one motion and vote.
Motion to have that done.
So E, F, and G.
E, F, and G.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Greenlee?
Yes.
Dr. O'Sherick?
Yes.
Dr. Prabola?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Eckert?
Yes.
Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes. All right, unless there is any objection, I'd also like to group each and I together, since they're the same type of.
Very similar, very similar.
So that would be the motion to approve the STEM Academy's TSI program, and a motion to approve the high school's ATS I plan.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Dr. O'Sherick?
Yes.
Dr. Prabola?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Eckert?
Yes.
Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Mrs. Eckert?
Yes.
Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Mrs. Goebel?
Yes.
Mr. Greenlee?
Yes.
Dr. O'Sherick?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes. Item K, motion to approve the application for payment number two five zero one six zero zero one to D and M Construction Unlimited Incorporated in the amount of one hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars for the installation of ADA ramps at the Tiger House. This is funded through medical access.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second. And for some clarification, it's not just the installation of, of ramps, it's the removal of the old ramps, it's redoing the foundations for these. They have to be ADA compliant, and this money does not come out of the general budget of the school district. This is money that is used from medical reimbursement from Medicaid.
I mean, there's tons of concrete work that went with this also, but this is Medicaid money. So with our students with disabilities, you know, we're eligible to get reimbursed through Medicaid for services. And basically, ramps like this, like if it's a temporary ramp, right, so if you actually money. So, with our students with disabilities, you know, we're eligible to get reimbursed through Medicaid for services. And basically, ramps like this, like if it's a temporary ramp, right, so if you actually go out and look at the ramps, they're not attached to the building, right? So they actually could be moved and used somewhere else, but if you look at them, they're incredible. They're aluminum, they're going to far outlast Paul Doherty here. But it doesn't cost us anything. It's totally funded through Medicaid.
Right, and there are very limited number of things we can use that Medicaid reimbursement money for in the district.
Oh, yes.
We can't just use it for other bills or things like that.
Absolutely not.
It has to be, to benefit certain population and student...
Students with disabilities.
Yeah.
Yes.
So all that being said, and I think we got a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Eckard?
Yes.
Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Mrs. Goble?
Yes.
Mr. Greenly?
Yes.
Dr. O'Sherick?
Yes.
Dr. Pabola?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Eckard?
Yes.
Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Mrs. Greenly?
Yes.
Dr. O'Sherick?
Yes.
Dr. Pabola?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes.
Motion to approve a resolution authorizing Mary Jean Negan as a signer on all First National Bank and PSDLA FMA financial network accounts, replacing Charles Supon, effective July 1st, 2025.
Motion to approve?
Second. Any other discussion?
No big trips, Mary Jean, anytime soon, right?
Roll call, please.
Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Mrs. Goble?
Yes.
Mr. Greenly?
Yes.
Dr. O'Sherick?
Yes.
Dr. Pabola?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Eckard?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes.
Item N, motion to approve the donation of three pallets of paper from the President Press at Quincy, Massachusetts.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any other discussion? Thank you for this donation. Can we get a roll call, please?
Mrs. Goble?
Yes.
Mr. Greenly?
Yes.
Dr. O'Sherick?
Yes.
Dr. Pabola?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Eckard?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes.
Item N, motion to approve the donation of three pallets of paper from the President Press at Quincy, Massachusetts.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any other discussion? Thank you for this donation. Can we get a roll call, please?
Mrs. Goble?
Yes.
Mr. Greenly?
Yes.
Dr. O'Sherick?
Yes.
Dr. Pabola?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Eckard?
Yes.
Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes.
Thank you to former paraprofessional Meg Dunning and her family. Their family had a paper company, and they donated all of that to our school district.
All right. Letter O, motion to approve the disposal of a Yamaha Clavino piano and three Wolansack 3M record players.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Put them in a Smithsonian or something, maybe.
I...
Record players.
Which building were these in?
I think they're in the intermediate center. If you click on...
I thought there was something I saw that said intermediate center.
Yeah, it's, there is an attachment there.
Okay, yes.
There's an, the piano stopped functioning, the internal mechanism and amplification, it's electric, it does not work. So, that is no longer repairable, and the record players do not function any longer. They're over 30 years old.
I mean, I still think I know people in Tuncanic that would collect that and put it. All right. Do we have a motion?
Yep.
All right, can we get a roll call, please?
Mr. Greenly?
Yes.
Dr. O'Sherick?
Yes.
Dr. Pabola?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Eckard?
Yes.
Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Mrs. Goble?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes. Just out of curiosity, is there an amount of money that something has to be worth before we have to vote on whether to throw away garbage?
Right. It's got to have value.
Okay.
If it doesn't have value, it's basically what we just did.
Okay.
If something has value, we can just get rid of it.
Sounds good. All right. Motion to approve a contract with Secola Signs LLC to fabricate and install building sign names for the high school, intermediate, and primary center at a cost of $24,000, $25,045. This project is being funded with budgeted funds through the Co-Stars, through a Co-Stars contract.
Motion to approve?
Second. Do we have any discussion?
These are all installation, soup to nuts, right?
Everything.
Okay.
The high school ones are going to be up very high, like above the auditorium, and since there's no lighting up there, they're going to be backlit. They're going to be LED at night. It's going to look good. Now, the, and at the intermediate center, it actually says the wrong name. It says Tuncanic Gary Middle School, so that'll be coming down. That's already lit, so we'll be putting up the correct name. And at the primary center, in between the two set of front doors, it'll be there, and that's already lit. But John Shapolsky has done a lot of work with sign companies and on some design, and I'm very excited to see it. I'm just, I'm thrilled to have our names on the buildings.
Good.
Yeah, and if there are, there was some comments out there about Co-Stars. If there are local companies that want to get involved with Co-Stars, I'm sure that there's a process and method to do that. There, you know, it's a great program, but it's open, there's no exclusion if they meet whatever state bidding criteria are on things.
I mean, we had multiple local sign companies up here, looking at this project. I mean, some of them were significantly more expensive.
Yeah. All right. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Dr. O'Sherick?
Yes.
Dr. Pabola?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Eckard?
Yes.
Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Mrs. Goble?
Yes.
Mr. Greenly?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes.
Approval of out-of-state field trip.
FFA is going to the National FFA, or would like to go to the National FFA Convention in Indianapolis. I'm so excited by this, because a few years ago, our FFA wasn't even functioning any longer, and we kind of built it back up. I think there's about 10 kids, I'm estimating about 10 kids that'll be going to Indianapolis, eight to 10 kids, am I right?
Mm-hmm.
But our FFA club had now has grown to how many students?
Close to 50.
From like, from a defunct group to now we're up to have about 50 kids in the FFA.
I appreciate the fact that the letter requesting this information came from a student.
It did.
The same, the same student who, I believe, took home chickens this summer to take care of them.
Did take home our chickens this summer, that's correct.
Motion to approve?
Second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Dr. Pabola?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Eckard?
Yes.
Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Mrs. Goble?
Yes.
Mr. Greenly?
Yes.
Dr. O'Sherick?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes.
Letter R, the approval of student handbooks. Motion to approve student handbooks for the 25, 26 school year.
Motion to approve?